Yes. Village Board Meeting, let's, I'll call the meeting to order and Village Manager Corrally, if you could do a roll call, please.
Certainly, Trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee Listener.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Here.
Trustee Onderdunk.
Here.
Trustee Rubin.
Here.
Trustee Vrie.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. This is our first in-person Village Board Meeting since July 2021, so welcome back, everybody. We're live streaming this meeting and we posted the links to the livestream on the Village's social media pages. We'll make the recording available on the Village's YouTube channel following the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Because we're in person, I want to remind anyone present of the following. First is, although they are optional, masks are recommended. The reason we had our prior meeting, which is normally in a smaller room, in a big room is because there's still COVID around, so we're trying to be as careful as we can be. If you're planning on speaking, there are sign-in sheets in the hallway, so, and please let us know, that'll help us run the meeting. Okay. Next item on the agenda is consideration of minutes. The minutes were circulated to us. There's a committee of the whole minutes for the February 17th meeting and the Board of Trustees meeting on February 17th also. If there aren't any comments, is there a motion to approve the minutes for those meetings?
So moved. Second.
Okay, and do we need a roll call for that?
Nope.
Okay, just a voice vote. Yeah, I'm out of practice, so Steve, I appreciate your...
All in favor.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Okay. Third item on the agenda is public comment. We haven't had a in-person meeting for a while, so I'm going to remind everyone about the rules for public comments. This portion of the meeting is for those in attendance who want to address the board regarding non-agenda items. With agenda items, I'll ask, and you'll be given an opportunity to talk about the agenda item at the time we talk about it. All comments should be limited to three minutes, and I'll notify a speaker when the time is up. When you get to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Unless you've contacted the Village staff in advance, we're not going to be able to accommodate audiovisual presentations. All comments should be directed to the board, to us, not to members of the audience. If you raise a question for the board, we'll acknowledge that, but we reserve the right not to respond immediately. When you make comments, please make them courteously, refrain from vulgar discriminatory or threatening comments, and also, please refrain from booing or cheering or applauding any speaker. While the Village Board was meeting remotely, as we did almost for the entire two-year period, we had a special procedure for comments from the public via email. We read them into the record, but that pandemic rule no longer applies, so we're not going to be reading emails into the record. However, I want you to know that if you reach out to the Village or the staff or board members, we get those, we look at them, we read them, and they are considered. I know that one member of the public, Joe Keefe, has asked to address the board this evening, and he's also shared information in advance with the board, so I'd invite Mr. Keefe to come forward. And, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, Board. I'm Joe Keefe, I live at 411 Randolph, Happy St. Patrick State, all of you. I should start by saying I'm remiss a little bit. For many, many years, each Village Board was treated to my big mouth, and I've been remiss because I haven't appeared before you, but that is a testament to your excellent governance. I did send you a memo, and I believe it was forwarded to you. I'm certain most of you haven't had time to look that over in detail. Just to give you in brief, construction next door to our home has revealed some contradictions in zoning and building codes, and I'm asking the board to consider adding an agenda item in the future to address those issues more fully with you, and then also to discuss enforcement for ordinances regarding building codes in particular. So I don't have much more to add, other than to say I can answer any questions regarding the memo that was sent to you, but other than that, I'm really here to just ask for an agenda item to be included in the future and then to address those issues with more deliberation at that time.
Thank you. Let me just tell you, I've read every word. My guess is that the other board members have read it as well. There's, there will, we appreciate the comments, we, I'm sorry that you're, you know, having these issues. Some of them seem like potentially legislative issues.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure. A lot of them are probably executive issues that the board wouldn't address, but the Village, the Village staff, potentially, I would address. So we're gonna, we'll, I, I don't know what we're gonna do, but we're gonna look at it, we're gonna look at it closely, and I want you to feel that, you know, the Village is here to help.
I certainly appreciate that, and I do understand the process you need to go through. I feel by delivering the memo, I've said an awful lot to you in the first place. You know, when my wife and I discussed this, we thought, as long as we're being heard in these areas, that's sufficient. Having that, having said that, I do believe that there are significant gaps, particularly in the zoning code for the RC District, and I do believe that there are significant gaps in enforcement in these areas that should be addressed in the public and should be brought forward. I stress to you that we had 15 months of construction next door to us, we now have another 15 months with a property abutting our backyard. We're going to have 30 months of essentially enforcement. If I could share just one more thought with you. Village staff has been excellent in this. They have, they have returned phone calls immediately, they responded to emails the same day, always, repeatedly. Their professionalism is absolutely pristine, and their communications warranted, really warranted compliments from us. That said, the Village is not able to enforce these ordinances sufficiently, they're not. We were the enforcers of the ordinances, with work going on well past 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock, 8:30, things along that line, and it's, there is a gap in enforcement here. We were, we were compelled to call police over and over and over again, and the police said the same thing each time we said it. We'll stop them, but, you know, it's talk to Public Works about enforcing these issues. So I would like to express that and ask your indulgence to provide a little bit of an opportunity to address those issues in a fuller manner. Again, I appreciate your time tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just, just to your point, and thank you for sending that, we have, this is a conversation that's come up before, just those enforcement pieces from, from a contractor perspective, and it's an issue, and it's a frustrating one, and I think it's something that we need to deal with, and we've tried, and I think we need to do a better job.
Well, I'll just share with you, as I, the example I gave you, if a restaurant had committed three violations in a row, you would pull the license for the restaurant to operate. The contractor next door to us, well more than 30 violations of building ordinances, and the consequences were, well, I guess we'll get a couple of fines, we'll pay those off and keep going.
Yeah.
And the same violations occurring over and over and over again. Again, I appreciate this, and thank you so much for the opportunity to chat with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other non-agenda public comment? Okay, then we'll go to the fourth item on our agenda, which is the report of committees. The first committee is the Committee of the Whole. For those of you who were here for the last couple hours, we just had that meeting, and we primarily talked about two subjects. One was a discussion of how we should proceed with outdoor dining with, at our restaurants, and how to proceed with parking and temporary parking and carryout parking. Then the second issue we discussed was potential changes in our sign code to reflect current practice as opposed to what the ordinance says, and also to try to be more in accordance with the latest U.S. Supreme Court law. That's the report of the Committee of the Whole. The next report is the Finance Committee. Trustee Vrie, tell us about that.
Yeah, thank you. So we had our meeting on Tuesday, went over our normal course of business, discussed the Village finances for the previous month, and as I've been saying for a while now, Village finances are in very good shape. Revenue, total revenue is looking very good. The Village is thriving from a, you know, if we look at it from a tax receipt perspective, we're doing really well, and so that is a continuation of a trend that we've seen for over a year, and hopefully it continues. There are certainly some things coming that are concerning from a Village's perspective, inflation probably being the number one issue, but if we look at it from a receipts perspective, things are very good. The other thing we discussed was just our reporting and trying to create reports that are easy to follow, illuminative, and give both us on the, on the committee as well as residents the ability to see how we're doing.
Thank you, Trustee Vrie. Trustee Listener, tell us about the Plan Commission.
Yes, the Plan Commission met last month, February 23rd. We had two items on the agenda. One was an exterior appearance review for a proposed sign for a Caldwell Banker office in Hubbard Woods at 45 Green Bay Road. That was approved. The second item we also recommended approval for, and we're going to be hearing about it tonight, it's the proposed consolidation plat for 484 and 486 Madison Avenue, which had been operating as a single lot for, for many years. So those were the two items that we did approve, that we approved or recommended approval of at the meeting.
Thank you. Trustee Hallwax, tell us about the Golf Advisory Committee.
Great, thank you. So some, some February updates. Work is being done on the replacement of a damaged intake pipe for the pond irrigation system. This was the pipe where we had silt that had accumulated over the years, and it'd been removed, and now we have a more efficient pipe that's being installed. So the permanent tee times for the season have been received, it's roughly $225,000 and over 200 golfers that prepay for 19 weeks, and I think if you remember, it's fantastic we had this, because we had both Sportsman closed recently and then Sunset Valley that had redone their golf course, so to have the permanent tee times be this popular is a testament to the golf course. In terms of the Friends of Glencoe Golf Club, Pam Mongus has started on March 1st, and she's written the top prospect list and going to be organizing with the board on communication and outreach. We're welcoming a new board member, Sam Segvich, who's a Glencoe resident, a new board member that we're excited to help get involved and help the fundraising efforts. And then next week, we're going to be having an article in the Glencoe Compass that's featuring the project and the board, and we hope it generates some excitement around this project. And then lastly, and really fantastic work by the golf course to be, we're open yesterday with 125 players, there was no other golf course that was open yesterday, so I think it's, just again, a testament to Stella and the staff to have, to be the only golf course in the north suburbs that was open.
Thank you, Trustee Hallwax, and thank you, Stella. Trustee Mulvaney, as the report on the Sustainability Task Force.
Yes, thank you. The volunteers of the Sustainability Task Force are energized and working hard, making Glencoe the most desirable and sustainable community in the galaxy, and some of the things we were working on this past month, we did meet a few weeks ago, we're meeting again Tuesday next week. Some of our items were, or updates are Ruby. Did I talk to you guys about Ruby last time? I don't recall.
I don't think so.
No. So Ruby is our mascot, as you may know, the bird competition that we ran, right, voted a hummingbird, the Ruby-throated hummingbird as our mascot, and I hope that you've all noticed that she is showing up downtown in various signage's for those kiosks, which I voted against. We have, we have Ruby in those kiosks, and we're using her image, which was created by one of our volunteers, in our communications, and I really do hope you start to notice that. We are looking to create a, a uniform, costume, for a Ruby costume that people could wear and take to events and educational activities. So this would be a costume made from recycled materials, so waste-to-art concept, to create Ruby, who is again, sort of a message carrier and an icon for the Sustainability Task Force. So Ruby's been, you know, we're looking for funding, we have some proposals actually to create the, to create the costume from some various artists, and it's actually pretty exciting, I think it's going to be a great success. Keep your minds open, it'll be great. Another thing we're doing, of course, is working on our library speaking circuit, right, so we're continuing to bring in good speakers to the library. Some of our programs and speakers have been the most popular, well-attended events at the library, so I'm told, and we are planning for our recycling and reuse events, you know, in addition to the bring your stuff to the landfill, we are trying to have the variety of ways for our residents to redo, to reuse and recycle our materials. We have a survey that's gone out, everybody I know here answered the survey, even if it did take you 10 minutes, you went through all the questions, it's not that much to ask. That information is very important to us, so we understand how best to get our messages out, and what issues are important, what issues have made traction or gotten attention with our residents. And finally, I have something written down, VM, but I don't know what that means, so it's, oh yes, that's the Village Manager. So Phil, the gift package, I forget exactly what the gift package is, but I think on my way up here, I noticed one of our gift packages, donations from our local businesses to support an effort, and for the life of me, I'm totally spacing out, so I'm asking you, maybe Jeff, if you could just shout it out or...
It's related to the survey.
Yeah.
There are, I think there are three separate gift, four separate gift baskets that any resident who fills out the survey would be entered into a drawing to receive one of those four, so.
So all of you knew that because you filled out the survey?
My wife filled, my wife filled out the survey.
Okay.
She tells me what I think.
Well, you could fill it out too, I think we're allowing that more than one.
She didn't put in her name because she thought it would be bad if she won.
That was my excuse too. That's my report on Sustainability Task Force. Jeff, unless you tell me, I might have missed a key issue.
Just an update, we had a really fantastic response on survey, we had over 400 responses.
Yeah.
It's still open.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for that report. Have you reconsidered on kiosks?
No, I have not. I am, I am, remain in this notion of transparency of our public rights away, but we should not have all this stuff in the way.
But if we have to have stuff, birds.
Birds and dining.
Okay, all right. Trustee Rubin, is there a report on the Council for Inclusion in Communities?
Yes, thank you. The council met March 2nd, I, it was a very interesting meeting, and I suggest folks that weren't able to watch it, it was still not live then, can go on YouTube and, and watch it, and it's worthwhile, it doesn't, you know, it's barely an hour, and it's very informative. The committee is working on setting goals for the committee going forward, they're sort of, the theory being, let's start with a clean slate, let's look at what the committee has done in the past and is doing currently, looking at it with a hard eye, what works, what's worked well, what could be done better, differently, but what about other types of things, other types of activities? The nature of the committee is such that it is sometimes, you know, and you've got a dozen people there, and they go, well, what are we supposed to be doing? And the answer is, well, what do you, what would we like to do that we think we can do, do well? Not everything in the world, but, you know, a limited set of things. And so we're working on that, as I said, the discussion was quite lively, very interesting, a lot of good ideas. One of the elements is to focus back on the mission statement itself, which talks about advising this group right up here as part of its mission statement, and we've probably been bereft in not doing that. And so we're thinking about that and talk, thinking about what would make sense to come back to this group and advise them about, if anything, and, you know, so as I said, it's all still being worked out, but people are spending a lot of time on that. At the same time, you know, they're thinking about the fact that the town halls, which have been very well received, things like, how can we get our communication out to more and more people? How could we get 400 people to even think about responding to something that we're doing? And thinking about engaging the community, and ultimately providing a, I think the phrase these days, which is quite apt, is a safe space to have a civil discussion, and not just among people who all agree with each other, about issues that can be difficult to discuss. So we'd like to inform the community, we'd like to be able to help inform the community, but we also want to be that group that can help address issues that are certainly quite at the top of a lot of people's minds. So that's what we're doing, and our next meeting is at the beginning of April, first Wednesday of April, and we will be in person, and I encourage everyone to attend.
Thanks for that report. Trustee Onderdunk last...
Pete had a question. Yeah, just a quick response, you know, of course, sustainability has three components, ecology, environment, economy, and social or governance, right? So, so there's a lot of overlap in our Venn diagrams here, and maybe it would be great to get our, our teams together to collaborate and get creative and maybe draw a little more attention, both sides, right, bring more social into our sort of environmentally-oriented task force and vice versa.
That's a great idea, and I'd love to follow up with you and have a coffee about it.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last but not least, Trustee Onderdunk, is there a report on the Historic Preservation Commission?
Okay, the Historic Preservation Commission did not meet in this month due to the staff turnover, but also, we did not receive any applications for demolition to review, so that was a good thing. In, we have been busy though, we have been doing some more research with respect to teardowns, especially the economics of teardowns versus new construction, and there's some new code amendments that we'll be bringing forward related to that. Also, I think there'll be some small group meetings that the Village Manager's office is coordinating. Phil, I don't know if you want to add to that at all?
Yeah, we are hopefully going to be scheduling those tomorrow, and they'll take place over the next couple of weeks, really just a bit of a follow-up to the public, or community, excuse me, the Committee of the Whole meeting in January where the Historic Preservation Commission was discussing with the board some alternatives and some changes to our codes. So those will be small group discussions with myself and the Chair of the Commission, just to perhaps bring a little more clarity and make sure that the next steps that the Commission is undertaking meet the needs of the Village Board, so we'll keep moving that along.
Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Okay, the next, item six on the agenda is the report of officers, and the first part is the Village Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few items for everyone this evening, and we're going to start with one that we unfortunately didn't get to at the Committee of the Whole. It's really just a brief update on our municipal franchise with Lake Shore Recycling Services. We are coming up on the end of that first agreement and beginning the process of some discussion with them. I've asked the Public Works Director just to give the board a brief overview on that and begin to elicit any feedback that you may have. So Dave, would you?
Certainly. Good evening, President Rowan, members of the board. As Phil indicated, it's hard to believe, but we have, we are nearing the end of the initial five-year franchise agreement with Lake Shore Recycling Systems, LLC, or LRS as we've come to know them, for the collection, processing, and disposal of solid waste, recyclable materials, and landscape waste in the Village. This was the first such franchise agreement in the Village's history for this service, and it is set to expire at the end of October of this year. The agreement allows for renewal of up to three additional years, and we have, we have begun preliminary meetings with representatives of Solid Waste Agency of Cook County, of which we are a founding member, who's a great asset for these, these types of deliberations, as well as representatives from LRS, and to lay out some of the initial issues and can, and, and, and terms that we think need to be amended and other things that we'll carry forward. But generally, from the staff's perspective, and as evidenced by the customer service response that we get from the community, LRS has been, has performed the services in the agreement over the last five years very effectively and consistently. And additionally, they've been an active partner with the Village in expanding special collection programs, such as providing the food scraps, drop-off service over on Temple Court, they've been an active participant, participant in the Sustainability Task Force Donate and Recycle Day for the past three years. So based on these positive experiences, it would be staff's recommendation that we initiate discussions to begin to negotiate renewal terms, but before we do that, we thought it would be valuable, both tonight to hear any initial feedback from the board, and it would encourage that as well in the coming weeks, so this will be a process that we would presume to, if you're so inclined to bring a new renegotiated agreement back for the Board's consideration, probably late summer, early fall, again, the current agreement expires at the end of October.
I would just add to the Director's comment, that we would also anticipate outreach to the community to gather any feedback or insights they have. I will say, our level of complaints have been relatively low. It has been a good relationship with LRS, and it's not always easy in communities like this with unusual street structures and backdoor service and curbside service mixtures to meet those customer service needs, but they seem to have done a nice job with that over the past several years. And we also want to look at how to enhance that contract for the benefit of the community, particularly in the neighborhood of landfill diversion. There are some programs that are in place right now that I think we could do more to encourage participation in, not the least of which is curbside composting of food scraps. We have a great program in place right now where people can come to a downtown drop-off location if they don't want to subscribe to a curbside program that runs during the summer months, and LRS has been a great partner in that. They've been collecting that on a year-round basis. I know there are people that sit at the dais here who participate in that program, and we are looking at, at opportunities like that to enhance and encourage landfill diversion. We, Glencoe, in all of the 23 SWANK communities that are members of SWANK are the highest, we have the highest rate of recycling of all of those communities, and we are significantly ahead of the next closest, which is the city of Evanston. We have about a 37% diversion rate. It could be higher. We've been flat, really, for most of the last four or five years in terms of that percentage, but we, we, we are significantly ahead of our, many of our neighboring communities, but those are priorities that we also want to work with LRS to, to move forward.
Thank you. I'll just say, I got advance word of this, and I've been thinking about it. In general, we want to do competitive bidding for stuff, but LRS is entitled to, you know, a little bit of a leg up because they've done a terrific job in town, including in my personal experience. my personal experience, which is obviously limited to me. And I think this, and I've talked to staff, and I just think this makes sense. I think we should make the best deal we can with a company that's proven itself. They've helped make us look good.
I want to comment that when we privatized the service, you may recall, there was a lot of fear. People were really, really uptight about making this decision, right? And for a long time, we heard, it can't be done, and it'll never happen, and it's going to be a disaster. I just want to point out, it was hardly a blip, right? So, some things that are, when we have change, new ideas, if we do it well, if we execute properly, as we did here, it can happen and, in fact, be a benefit to the community, as we've seen here, where we have really expanded, as Phil, sorry, village manager Corrali points out, increasing the number of services with respect to composting, landfill diversion, and actually additional services, right? So, it's been a real benefit. I don't know what the contractual process is here. Did they have, did their contract have extensions available, or are we in a situation where, you know, we have to renegotiate?
No, there are, there are, there is the ability for three one-year renewals, and we may, we'll consider that. We'll also consider, you know, whether a longer-term extension is warranted, and we'll bring that back for the board's consideration.
We really are benefited by our membership in SWANQ when it comes to these discussions. Their executive director, both the outgoing and incoming, outgoing, excuse me, and incoming, are exceptional when it comes to working with us to understand the market and understand the changes that have been implemented in legislation that relate to landfills, that relate to recycling. So, we're going to continue to partner with them and work through these issues. But also, you know, LRS really has been a partner. When we've asked to do some things that are outside of the franchise, for instance, for them to begin to pick up those containers for food scrap recycling, they did it with no questions asked, with no additional cost imposed. And so, it has been an opportunity, I think, for us to learn from one another and continue to do more, to find ways to lessen our overall impact, particularly with what we throw away. And there's more to do, more education, and they can be a partner with that as well. So, we will be back to you, and we'll check in. As I said, this is something that we want to, we want to get community input on as well, and we're going to get that process underway soon. I've asked the director also to just walk us through our street resurfacing program for 2022. As you may remember, the board approved almost $2 million contract for a significant asphalt street rehabilitation program this year, and Dave's going to give us a little bit of insight on when that's going to get started.
Yes, we will flip the calendar in a week and a half to April, and that is the unofficial start of the capital improvement season. So, we will, we are making plans to be ready for that. As the village managers indicated, we, this board approved a contract back in February, which will be year one of our two-year comprehensive maintenance street resurfacing program. The contract with Builders Paving includes 20 street segments totaling nearly 5.8 miles of village streets, primarily streets located both east, on the east and west side. South of South Avenue is this first-year phase. Work is scheduled to begin in mid-April. Plans are underway to begin to post some of our capital improvement project signs, and we will be working internally to promote and educate the community on where to find information. Residents are encouraged to always go to the website. There's an easy-to-use Current Construction Projects tab, and also encourage all residents, if they aren't already, to subscribe to the village e-news for regular and timely updates on the work. So, we're looking forward to getting started. It's been several years since we've done any significant street resurfacing, and it is a, it'll make a major impact. We've got, as you're out and about and see post-winter conditions, that's when our street system, you know, particularly an aged street system can look its worst, and so, the need is there, and we're ready to get started. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dave. Just a couple more quick items for the benefit of the group. Our village license renewal materials for vehicle and pet licenses are being mailed to all Glencoe households. You should be getting those in hand soon. I think it's an important point to make. It's possible to update your information and renew all of those licenses online, and we encourage people to do that. It's a very convenient way to take care of that effort. As a reminder, new vehicle stickers need to be displayed by May 1st, and renewals received after that date will incur a $50 late fee. As the board will recall, we do try to, when there are milestone events taking place in the community, particularly with community organizations, we try to spotlight those with our vehicle sticker. This year, the vehicle sticker will spotlight the Glencoe Community Garden, which will be in operation for 10 years in 2022. You may recall, the Glencoe Community Garden actually exists on village-owned property along the Green Bay Trail. It is leased to them for a dollar, and they have managed to generate literally tons of food that is all donated and have created a tremendous volunteer opportunity in the community. They're great community partners for not just the village, but the Park District, the Friends of the Green Bay Trail, and many others, and we're very glad that they are part of Glencoe. So, they are going to, their 10-year anniversary is spotlighted on our, on our vehicle sticker for 2022. So, look for that as that, as those start coming out. I was going to, trustee Mulvaney thankfully took some of my thunder on the Sustainability Task Force survey, but I'm going to repeat again, that link is available on the village's website through Monday, the 21st. Encourage people to participate. It really does only take about 10 minutes. It's, I think, going to be very helpful for the Sustainability Task Force as they set their priorities. And then, just a few upcoming events to make note of. Again, trustee Mulvaney mentioned a couple of these, but they do warrant repeating. The Fourth Annual Donate and Recycle Drop-Off Event, which is hosted by the Sustainability Task Force, takes place on Saturday, May 14th. There's going to be information on the village's website. That's going to take place in the Metro Southeast commuter lot where it took place last year. Great opportunities to both recycle household goods, construction materials, all sorts of things that may be hiding in your attic or your garage that you don't want anymore and can be put to good use in a different environment. The, for all those items that can't be donated or recycled, the annual spring cleanup event takes place on Saturday, May 21st, so a couple of months away, but people do start planning for that. So, that is when LRS will collect items at the curb throughout Glencoe on that day, without real limitations, though there are things that can't be placed, and we have that information on our website. I also wanted to make mention of the fact that curbside yard waste and food scrap collection does again begin pretty soon, coming up on April 6th. Then that continues every Wednesday until December 14th. So, just a few things to be mindful of. Last but not least, I want to introduce a new staff member who's with us tonight for the first time, our new communications manager, Sammy Hansel. Sammy started with us on the 28th of February. She comes to us after working with the village of Hinsdale for about five and a half years in a similar role. I will say, Sammy is a breath of fresh air to our organization. She's going to do some great things in adapting and bringing to the next level the village's already robust communications efforts, but she's really already hit the ground running. So, welcome to Sammy. She's hiding behind this computer screen over here. And you'll be, you'll be seeing more of her as we start talking more about our community engagement efforts. She'll be out and about in town and partnering with our sister governments to make sure that we're all working together and sharing information as a community, not just as a bunch of individuals. So, welcome to Sammy. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have, but that's the conclusion of my report.
I don't see any questions. So, the next item on the agenda is the village president's report. The first item is consideration of a proclamation declaring March 2022 as Women's History Month in the village of Glencoe. When we have these proclamations, they're, they're part of the published agenda, so we don't, we don't need to read them, but read them to the, into the record, but we have read them. And if there aren't any questions, is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
Sumoed. Second.
A voice vote, Steve.
A voice vote on the proclamation.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is consideration of a proclamation declaring April 29th, 2022 as Arbor Day in Glencoe. And again, the proclamation is part of our agenda published. If there aren't any questions, there is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
Sumoed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before we get to the next item, I want to stop, say the reason for the next item, and that is that John Satter, who's been on the zoning board for, you know, eight years or maybe longer than that, served with distinction, and also was the zoning board member on the plan commission, has given me the sad news that he sold his, they've, he and his, I've sold the house, and they're moving to Evanston. They're renting at Evanston. I hope they'll be back, but you can't serve on the zoning board if you don't live here. So, he's had to withdraw, and I just want to say, for the record, that how grateful we are to John for his service to the town, he's been terrific. I've served on the zoning board with him. He'll be missed. So, you know, thank you, John. I'm glad he probably made a boatload of money on his house, but we'll miss him. Fortunately, we have an excellent replacement, Deana Fox, who knows the real estate business, who, this is not required, but she grew up in the town. She's now back. She's eager to serve, and we're excited to have her. So, unless there are any questions, I'd like a motion to approve appointment of Deana Fox to the zoning board and the zoning commission.
Sumoed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call again, or no?
This one would require just a consensus.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Do we ever need to call for the nays? Just curious on that protocol.
If the, on voice vote, if the village president determines that there are sufficient ayes that have the majority, he doesn't have to call for the nays.
Which I did determine with all these. Okay, the next, the next item is actually related. Because John Satter was the zoning board representative on the plan commission, we need to appoint another one. And the advice is to appoint Scott Novak, who's the current chair of the zoning board, to be the zoning board representative of the plan commission. Scott's agreed to do this, and I wholeheartedly recommend him. Is there a motion to approve Scott Novak's appointment as the plan, as the zoning board representative of the plan commission?
Sumoed. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. That covers the village president's report. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. These are items where, by and large, we don't think there would need to be discussion. All of them were published in the, online for everyone to see, and they're available. And while we were not having in-person meetings, the village manager was required to read the titles of each of these items, but because we're here in person, we don't need to do that. So, but all these are published. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any of the trustees want to talk about? Okay. In that event, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sumoed.
Is there a second?
Second.
This will need a roll call.
Let's have a roll call vote.
All right. Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Onderdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Bree.
Yes.
Motion carries. That covers the consent agenda. The next item is our regular business, and the first item on our regular business is consideration of an ordinance amending the village code to allow keeping chickens, and I should be more specific, hens, on private property. And I'll ask our Public Works Director, Dave Mao, and our management analyst, Jeff Maudsley, to present on this. And before they present, let me just say, we've gotten, we've invited and received a lot of commentary from residents going both ways, and I want to assure everyone that we've read them, we're considering them, and we're taking everybody's point of view seriously, and because they're from both sides, we recognize that whatever decision is made, we're not going to be able to make everyone happy. Jeff, if you want to present.
Thank you, President and Board. Tonight, we are asking you to consider a change to the village code that would allow residents to keep chickens on their private property, specifically hens, as you noted. As of right now, this is strictly prohibited under our code. Just as a reminder to how we've gotten to this point, back on September 23rd, 2021, the village board at the Committee of the Whole first considered the idea of allowing chickens on private property. There was some discussion that we, that the board would like to explore this, and they asked staff to put together a draft ordinance of what the conditions and restrictions that would surround keeping chickens on private property would look like. Staff researched this. On December 21st, they, we presented a draft ordinance for review at the Committee of the Whole meeting. Village Board gave us feedback and suggestions for changes, which we implemented. The village board also asked that we ask the public for comments, which President Rowan referred to earlier. We did receive numerous comments between that initial September meeting and yesterday. And as, as he noted, you've all received them, you've all read them. We also, as part of our feedback from the January 21st meeting, we contacted other communities in the Chicagoland area that do allow chickens and asked them about their experience. So, first, I'd like to talk about the, just to summarize the resident comments. We did receive comments from 57 different residents. Some of them commented several times. Of those, 18 were supportive and 39 were in opposition. The supporters, common themes among their comments included, they liked access to fresh eggs, they felt that it provided a better connection between nature and their food sources, and it was an educational opportunity for their children, and it's also more sustainable. Opponents are concerned about noise, they're concerned about odors, they're concerned about attracting predators into neighborhoods, and they feel in general that chickens don't belong in a residential area. As I mentioned, we contacted other communities in the Chicagoland area. We contacted eight that currently allow chickens and asked them about their experience in terms of how many of their residents actually do keep chickens and what kind of complaints, what kind of issues they're having with that. The summary of that, of those conversations are included in your packet, but overall, they reported very few issues with people keeping chickens in their backyards. They said that most of the complaints came from people who did not go through the proper procedures of getting a license or a permit or whatever the community required to keep chickens, and so, and they had to do enforcement there. Next, please. I want to highlight- I want to highlight some of the, the provisions of the draft ordinance. Again, it does create a license system for keeping chickens, so people that want to keep chickens in their backyards have to come to the village and apply for a license. It limits the number of total chickens that could be kept in their yard from, to four. That was a change from the original draft ordinance that, that suggested that six should be kept, but we lowered the limit to four. We are limiting the total number of licenses in the community to 10. That's not something we've, we've discussed before, but it was in the draft ordinance, so that it's an assurance that we're not going to allow these things everywhere, that we are going to have a cap on how many residents can be, can keep chickens in the community. We also have a prohibition on roosters. We require an inspection on the property before the license is issued and it's renewed. That was another suggestion that the Village Board gave to us at the meeting in January. It mandates that chickens must be kept in an enclosed pen or coop, and it mandates that they have a, a four feet per chicken in that coop. It requires structures be resistant to predators, requires the pen and coop be clean at all times and not emit noxious odors. And finally, if people do not meet the terms of the ordinance, we do have the power to revoke the license or, and, or impose a fine. So, do I have any questions or discussions about the draft ordinance in front of you?
Jeff, before, thank you, clear, succinct, helpful. Before you answer board questions or the board talks about this, you know, it's, it's after eight, so, and I don't know the extent to which residents have come to express their views, but why don't we take a pause and let the residents, if there are any here, talk about their views on this? We've read everything that's been sent in, but if there, and I, if there are any residents that want to speak on backyard chickens, thank you. So, when you come up, tell us your name and where you live, and then tell us what you think.
Not your address, just if you live in Glencoe.
Sure. Hi, I'm Shayna Martin, I live in Glencoe on Euclid Avenue. Of those 18 comments in support, I probably wrote two of them. So, I, I'm here just to enthusiastically support the change to allow chickens. I think these, this draft ordinance addresses a lot of the concerns, and I just wanted to appear in person to ensure that there was someone here to support this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to talk about chickens? Okay, so, board members, you know, Jeff is here to answer questions, we've already talked about this before, we now have an ordinance. One thing I'll say is that, by and large, the comments we got from the public were not talking about the specifics of the ordinance, and some of the comments that were objections may have suggested some of the things we've, we have put in the ordinance, you know, so if there are problems, we think we can deal with them, but, you know, board members, if there are comments you have on this, I think we'd all back the problem. Sure.
I had a couple people, this is point of clarification, I had a couple people approach me with respect to slaughtering chickens in the backyard or in the front yard or at home, could you clarify that?
Yes, um, let me find the right section. It does, it says, let's see, on page 194, item C4, it says, "No slaughtering of chickens may be conducted in public view on a licensed property." Now, if you'd like that changed, we can, we can certainly change that.
Well, there are a couple people talked to me, they were concerned about that, even if it was in the backyard.
Can we have any clarification what the concern is?
Just that they didn't like it, they didn't think it was appropriate. I, I don't have particularly strong feelings about it, but I did say that I would bring it up.
What, Jeff, what, what's the regulation and the other eight communities look like on this? Is it any different than ours?
Yes, very, very few, I'm sorry, Jeff, but I represent many of them, very few have any provision concerning slaughtering.
Okay.
So, you've taken a step to prohibit it within view, within public view. Yours is more restrictive.
It seems like a reasonable item in the ordinance.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
And if, let me just say, the way I feel about all of this is if it turns out there's a problem, we're going to step in and fix it. So, if it turns out that this is like Raiders of the Lost Ark II, where there's some weird ceremony that ends with a chicken meeting its demise, we'll deal with it then.
Well, it's only, it's also only a one-year license.
Right.
I have a funny story to tell. I came late to this meeting, and when I got to my seat, there was something in my chair, and I suspect that one of you turkeys left me a little gift, and I didn't even connect with it until just now. When I looked over here and I saw this little guy, a rubber, a rubber chicken.
There's, there's, there's a story, it was, it's for Phil.
I know, I'm known as the chicken guy here.
It's for Phil.
It was on my chair.
It's for Phil.
It was on my chair. You will not hear that noise with the hens. I placed it on the chair next to yours.
It's for Phil.
Because it was sitting on my chair when I arrived this evening.
And we're not going to name names, but it might have something to do with our finance Okay.
So, so my, my feeling is we're having a discussion here, we've, we've been through this, I think, before, a lot of the things I read in terms of complaints are, are not things that have been experienced by most of the communities that allow chickens, so the odor simply isn't, has not been a, an issue with other communities. Noise, as long as you don't allow roosters, is not an issue. Those, I think, are the dominant complaints. Other concerns about wildlife, like attracting coyotes, it is not going to be the maximum of, what do we have, 40 hens? You know, and I would be really surprised if we get the 10, 10 people with four hens. Those 40 hens are not going to create a coyote pack, right? There are a lot easier prey for these coyotes, and we are required by the ordinance to protect the hens, and no hen owner wants to feed the coyotes with their hens, right? So, there's, there's a mutual interest in not feeding the wildlife the hens that you're keeping in your backyard. So, I think that's another issue that's just not particularly real in the, in the experience of other communities. Those really were the dominant complaints that I heard, and they, that's not compelling to me to vote no. I think, I personally think we should go forward with this and allow people in Glencoe to experiment with this idea. And as, as the President said, if need be, we can always dial back, the biggest risk here is a one-year permit. If it's a nightmare, what'd you say, Raiders of the Lost Ark, man, you're aging yourself. Raiders of the Last, Lost Ark kind of issue. Then, of course, we, we can adjust. So, personally, as I think you all know, I am in favor of going forward with allowing hens, not necessarily chickens, huh, hens in the backyard with safe structures.
I just have a question around sort of enforcement. I mean, if, if somebody's not taking care of the chicken, or they leave the coop to be a mess, or whatever it might be, is, do we need to have something in there that says, what happens? I mean, is the license revoked, and then what happens to the hen?
Basically, what happens, according to the order and ordinance, is that if public safety would investigate, and then it would be up to them to either bring the hen and the coop into compliance, or to revoke the ordinance, or revoke the, the license.
And remove.
So, and then, at that point, they would have to remove the, the animals and everything.
And then, do we try to find a new home for this hen? Or do we?
Yeah.
Well, that's not in the ordinance.
Well, but it, in practice, in practice.
It won't be RD cluckers.
In practice, it would be a, an effort of our animal control officers.
Or it sounds like people slaughter the chicken out of public view, because that is one of the things that's allowed by this ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
So, I would like to say that I am opposed to this ordinance. I think that a lot of the people in Glencoe are opposed to the ordinance. I think there were other reasons that were mentioned in the letters that haven't been mentioned here, there were health issues that we totally skirted over, and I decided to just, you know, Google it. So, I Googled CDC backyard poultry, and, you know, you come up with some things that are frankly scary, and it's from the CDC. So, they talked about this year's investigation of outbreaks of poultry over, however, backyard poultry can carry salmonella germs that can make you sick, and then they give a list of fast facts. Illnesses, 1,135, hospitalizations, 273, deaths, 2, 2. And they talk about how that chickens can carry salmonella germs even if they look healthy and clean, and these can easily be spread to anything in the areas where the chickens live and roam, and that includes your children. So, if you are keeping children, chickens in your yard so that you can teach your children about them, they can touch these chickens, touch their mouths, and swallow salmonella germs. So, I mean, I think we have health issues here, and I also don't think that by restricting it to 10 licenses, how are we going to pick the 10 lucky families who get to do this? You know, I'm wondering, if we think that having chickens in your yard is so great, why are we restricting it to 10 people? And where in the ordinance does it say where you can place the, that you have, it says that you have to put the chicken enclosures in the rear of the residential property. Is that good for your neighbor? Is that where we want to be putting it, at the property line? I mean, I think there are so many issues here that could bring difficulties between neighbors, and why, why are we doing this?
I have some answers, but let's, if there are other trustees that want to respond to Gail, or weigh in.
Perfectly reasonable view, perfectly reasonable view, I, I, I get it, and I have no, I'll use the phrase dog in this fight, because I don't plan on having chickens, I have dogs. And when I'm hearing you're going through a litany, number one, I think about the dogs that I have, taking them to the dog park and coming back and handling them, and, believe me, if we didn't wash our hands, God only knows what we'd be getting, right, from the dogs, and having them run around in a dog park, et cetera. It's similar issues, let's not be too descriptive, of, of things that can be problematic. You can have a small dog attracting, you know, a coyote just as easily as you can have a chicken, and people are more likely to leave their small dogs out in their yard unattended, unfortunately, where at least the chickens are protected. I just think that if people choose to do this on their property, it's becoming more and more accepted in terms of the number of other communities, we're not alone in this. And I think this is almost, I view this almost like a trial program. We're going to do this for a year, give a one-year license, see what the problems are, see what happens, and then we can always, as the President has said, change course. If we're seeing problems, we can, we can fix them. And as to who's going to get the 10 licenses, I think, you know, that may just be a first come, first serve, I don't remember what the ordinance says, I don't believe it addresses it directly. But I will tell you, I'll be very surprised if we have 10 people applying.
So, you know, in terms of the comparison to dogs, one thing I have to say is, we don't eat the byproducts of dogs, and there are issues with eggs that can get contaminated. Now, you're going to have somebody who's getting, how many ever, eggs that are produced each day, and they could be giving them out to their neighbors. I mean, we could be potentially spreading diseases here, and again, if you're going to allow it, which I'm not in favor of, and I really think a lot of people are not in favor of it, you shouldn't be putting it at the back of the property, at the property line. Put it close to your house, so it can be as far away from your neighbor as possible. Why are we putting it at the edge of the property line? That is not where it belongs.
I, I have to say, that's, that's a fair point. If you're worried about a neighbor that objects, why have it right next to it?
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you that if you had somebody looking at a house for sale, and they are going to see this, this structure at the property line, you know, it could hurt the market appeal.
Anything could hurt the market.
Anything, but now you have let, you have allowed an additional item that wasn't there.
Yeah, yeah, but that's one of, oh, they have a swing set in the backyard and it's not.
Is it the property line or the setback?
This is the rear.
So, we, Gail, we think it's the setback, not the property line.
Where's the property line? This is very difficult, where, where is it set up?
Accessory structures must satisfy zoning.
Well, I think, I'm getting it. The point of clarification, if, if you consider it an accessory structure, it's going to need to meet the, the same setbacks that accessories.
Right, so it cannot be in the rear yard. It would be, it would have to meet the set, well, the rear yard is defined in the zoning code, it, it has to meet the same setback requirements and yard requirements that a, a structure would have.
Like a shed. A shed or a, or other secondary structure.
So, I'm, I'm looking for the.
Taylor, do you want to speak to that?
Accessory structures in a single-family residential lot have a rear setback requirement of five feet from the property line, and it has a five feet from the property line, depending on the zoning district, eight to 12 feet from each side. So, it has to meet accessory structure setback, at least five feet from the back, eight to 12 from the sides, the way I read this would have to be five yards. So, that could be, could, could, provision in here that you have to increase things or whatever would be appropriate. It just meets typical accessory structure setback, five from the back, eight to 12.
I, I would certainly entertain that amendment right here that pushes the further act of the property law, making a further stronger happen.
It seems reasonable, no major objection there on my part, I mean, that's, you know, whatever, whatever makes sense.
Would you do it by, be, be careful by, either by distance feet or, or by percentage?
Right, because you don't know how deep the yard is.
But that, that, all this is, is, is within your purview to, to consider in the ordinance?
Just as another point of clarification, you, you brought up, how would we find the 10, how would we decide who gets the 10 licenses? In the ordinance, it does say it is first come, first served. And, and it says for license renewal in, in subsequent years, that people that already have a license will get permits.
Let me just say, in response to the question about how, I guess I'd be shocked, and we'll see if we get 10 requests with liquor licenses that are worth big money. If you want a liquor license, you have to come to the village and get the village to amend its ordinance to allow the license, and we do it one at a time. So, it's not a weird idea to, to limit the number of licenses, and if by some chance, in year three of this, if it works, and we get more requests, we could consider whether to expand the number of licenses or not. But, you know, we're all, we, we got letters about this, which shows that there's some interest in the village, but, you know, in the real world, most people don't care, and they don't know that they care unless either they're going to want these, or their next-door neighbor that they hate is, is doing it, in which case maybe they'll start to care. And we'll find out.
If it passes.
If it passes. And, and let me, I, I also do not have a dog in this hunt, I'm not going to have chickens. I think, I could be wrong, but I think based on what I've looked at, that this is not going to change. that this is not gonna change, um, life for anybody in a negative way in the town. If I'm wrong about that, we will jump on this and we'll fix it. But I don't think it will. And I think as a rule, it'd be nice when people come to the village and say they wanna do something. If we can determine with some confidence that it's not gonna be a problem, which is where I am now, it's nice to say yes. So this looks, this is a thing that's happening. And when I did, Gail alerted me to the CDC website, which I read. Salmonella is possible. There are other ways you can get salmonella, but, including from, take it to the grocery store if anyone wants to look. And, but what they, what they said to do, which was familiar, was wash your hands for twenty seconds after you've been hanging around with your chickens. And that sounded familiar to me, 'cause that's what we've had to do for the last two years, whenever we were anywhere. And they said, "Don't hug your chicken." And there's a video online of Susan Orlean, who's a New Yorker writer who wrote an article back in two thousand nine, talking about backyard chickens and being sort of positive about it. And she has chickens and the video shows her hugging her chicken. I thought, oh, you know, if she reads the new CDC commentary for two thousand twenty-one, she'll stop doing that. I, I believe this can be done safely. Parents will, a lot of the concern was for children. Parents of children, I, I would assume will be responsible with their children. We trust them to do that anyway. So I think we should try it. If it turns out we're wrong, we'll fix it. Anybody else wanna weigh in on this? If not, uh, thank you, I mean, I appreciate the work on the ordinance. Do, we, I don't, you know, there's an open question based on what trustee listener said about whether we should move these back further than the setback. And the question is, do we, which, you know, is fine. And is that feet or percentage? And I, that's a question for sort of zoning experts, and I don't know what the right answer is. Taylor, do you? And, and based on, and looking at these, they're not, they're.
Yeah.
Feet as percentage.
You could go either way. I mean, feet would be consistent. If you, if you felt that there's a certain distance that would be appropriate, that would be applicable across all residential lots.
You could say not less than X feet from the rear lot line. Or from any lot line.
Or from any lot.
Well, so the setback is five feet?
Rear, the required rear setback is five feet. Required side setbacks depend on zoning district, between eight to twelve feet, depending on what the zoning district.
But this gotta be sort of in the back. What if we said, I, I, would, what if we said ten feet?
Let me correct myself. Five, RD, in the rare instance to be in the RD multi-family district, it's a five-foot side setback there. So between five and twelve feet. But typically in single-family, it'd be eight, ten, or twelve feet, depending on the district. For the side setback.
But it's only allowed, um.
In, in the rear, right?
In single-family, right?
I mean, I suppose.
Yeah, it's only allowed in single-family.
So, and it's gotta be, the side setback moves it at least, you know, ten, twelve feet off of the side. How significant would it be in terms of people actually being able to do it if we said ten feet from the, the ten-foot setback for these instead of five feet? Would that have a big impact on whether people can do it?
On, on nearly all lots in the village, no. It would, it would not have a significant impact. There are some lots, it would, but most not.
We can address, and again, we'll find out when people come and ask for permits. But, Gail's got a point about, um, having it further from the neighbors. So what if we said ten feet?
And is that from the rear lot line or any lot line?
Rear.
Well, some, yeah, 'cause some lot line, side, the side setbacks could be up to twelve.
Maintain the zoning size.
Are you gonna, so we can say at least, at least ten, period? Here, not less than, not less than ten. So that if by some chance it's a side setback of eight, we're saying, okay, this has gotta be two feet further.
Or, or the opposite, if it's a side setback of twelve, they'd have to honor the twelve.
Yes, not less than, not less than.
So it's from any lot line?
Okay, now this is not answering, you know, most of Gail's objections, but it's answering one of them.
My, my only question for the village attorney would be if there are any concerns about this not being in the zoning code? These setback requirements just being part of this separate.
No, you're imposing an additional requirement, um, which you can do here. It's not a zoning requirement, it's a license requirement.
It's not less restrictive.
And you're not liberating?
It's not less restrictive than the zoning code.
Correct.
Can I ask a silly question, 'cause I'm not a dog owner? So when dogs get their licenses renewed or, do you have to get any kind of, are there shots or veterinary requirements? And are we doing the same thing here? Because we want healthy chickens, especially if we're eating those eggs. And if we have whatever requirements you have for your dogs, I think you should have the chickens.
I think that should be true for hamsters as well? If that's okay?
Are you making fun of me?
A little bit.
Isn't there a registration requirement with the state?
Yes, there, there is a registration requirement with the state, uh, Department of Agriculture. Um, what that will do is that when there is a, an outbreak of disease, uh, the homeowners will get alerted of that and they'll be given instruction as to help mitigate that.
Jeff, but Jeff, to, to trustee listener's point more specifically, is there, that you're aware of, any vaccination or, um, some other drug requirement that comes as a part of that state registration?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Salmonella is not, you know, salmonella comes from animal byproducts and stuff.
I mean, there are other diseases, there are other diseases. Like Google the internet. I'm not the chicken expert.
Well, I, the CDC didn't, the CDC didn't say never do this. The CDC said, "Wash your hands." And particularly if you're hugging chickens, wash your hands. Um, and, you know, I suppose we should, when staff does this, we should advise everybody to look at the CDC advice on this. Anybody else?
Sorry, Gail, I didn't mean to, to be mean in any way.
I know, I know what you were, you were proposing.
Is there a motion, I think we've discussed it, um, there's not total agreement, so we're glad we're having a roll call vote. Is there a motion to approve the new hen ordinance?
It would be the ordinance as, with the amendment concerning the ten-foot setback.
The minimum, the, the minimum ten, ten-foot setback.
Sure, some of.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Listener?
No.
Trustee Mulvaney?
Yes.
Trustee Onderdunk?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Bree?
Yes.
The motion carries. Okay.
Okay, little things.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of a resolution amending the conference of fee and fine schedule for calendar year two thousand twenty-two. Um, and I'll ask our Director of Finance, Nikki Larson, and Public Works Director, Dave Mau, to present. But first, Nikki has to explain the green chicken.
The Finance Department has a history of having very elaborate birthday celebrations for each other and the chicken was part of one of the birthday celebrations. So it's, now it's become a Finance Department mascot, so we brought it along.
I'm gonna introduce her to Ruby.
Very close. There's red, there's red on it. Okay, I'm trying to write it in here. Um, okay, so before you, included in the agenda packet for this evening is an amendment to the village's fee and fine schedule. We have two amendments for your consideration this evening. The first of the two, we have discussed at length, so I won't spend much time on it. But we did discuss this at the committee, the whole, several times. This was the fee structure for building permit extensions. Um, the chart on the screen shows the current fee structure that is in place. And then, um, the, the column all the way to the right shows the recommendation. Um, so moving on from there. Um, the other item, we will spend a little bit more time on because we really haven't talked much about this. Uh, we did mention this during the budget process. The village obtained a grant to install a charging station in downtown Glencoe. So this is now installed in Village Court. It is not live yet, um, because we're still working through the setup. Um, but we are proposing a fee for usage, um, to use the charging station. Um, as of right now, this is a two-hour spot. Um, so what this charging station would function as, more of a top-off, if you will, if we're comparing it to a gasoline-powered vehicle, it would not provide a full charge for an electric vehicle, but it's designed for those folks using an electric vehicle, visiting the downtown, um, and allowing them to use it for about two hours. The installation's, as I mentioned, is grant-funded. The, the fee that we are proposing is ten cents per kilowatt hour. Um, there are two ways that you can charge for a charging station. You can charge either per kilowatt hour or a, just a flat dollar per hour. Um, those are not the same thing. Um, and we've learned a lot about this. Um, depending on the type of vehicle you have, depending on the weather, um, depending on how you drive your vehicle, will all affect the amount of charge that you need and the amount of power that you draw from the station. Um, this particular station has a forty-amp, um, connection and it does allow for power sharing. So you can have two vehicles plugged into the station. So, uh, that, the power that is drawn upon that and therefore the charge that is created from that can vary. But just doing some quick calculations and averaging it out, what we think, um, the average charge will be between a dollar five and a dollar fifty per hour. Um, a lot less expensive than gasoline is right now and not too far off from what we would pay to provide the station with electricity. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions on this at this time.
Clear and straightforward? Anybody have a question?
The last bullet, two-hour charge is approximately one to one fifty per hour. So if we charge, basically are we covering our costs for whatever we charge?
Pretty close.
Okay.
Um, it, it will change, um, I believe the average price per kilowatt hour in the United States right now is thirteen and a half cents. Um, so we're proposing a fee of ten cents to try and incentivize users.
If it goes up, we can obviously just raise it.
We can. We can visit this at any time. It's part of the regular fee and fine schedule.
The other thing I'd note is if, based off of the initial first usage, if we, if we determine that we need to calculate that rate differently, not just the rate itself, but if we wanna go an hour-by-hour charge, that's certainly a possibility as well. We have lots of flexibility with that, but we thought we'd start at this point.
But if we're only barely covering our costs, why, why is that the thing to do? Because obviously this is such a low fee and we have substantial fees for so many other things. I mean, the people are already finding huge savings. I mean, sure, we might encourage electric cars, but, you know, whether you're charging ten cents, thirteen cents, fifteen cents, whatever, I don't know why we wouldn't be seeing this as covering our costs and making a little profit on it, because you're gonna have incentives. Anyway, I, I just don't understand why.
I, I think if the board, if the board is inclined to do that, that's certainly a, a way forward. I don't think the staff was looking at it as a, um, first of all, it's gonna be a very small revenue stream, but I, I think we also wanted to look at it as a starting point. Um, it will vary. Those, those kilowatt hours may be six cents, um, at some point. They go up and down based off of ComEd's, uh, delivery charges. So it, I, I don't think it's intended to be a magic number. It was intended to be somewhat in line with neighboring communities that do it and, uh, it could be adjusted if the board's so inclined to do so.
Yeah, but if nationally it's thirteen cents, I don't know why we would, we end one.
Do we have a cost for the stations?
Fall below.
We had some cost, but this was, this was a rather, uh, large grant from ComEd that paid for a significant portion of it.
I think it's wonderful to have and I'm sure there'll be demand for, from, we know.
I have a, I just have a question. Is it, are you allowed to park there if you don't have an EV or is it, it's a?
It'll be, this shot here, as Nikki indicated, this is not completed, but it'll be signed. Uh, it's parking for EV, EV vehicles while charging. Two-hour limit, we're, we're also considering an overnight option 'cause there are, we have some residents that live in the downtown business district that are anxious for the station to get in, so we'll, we'll have a provision for overnight. But it's intended to be two-hour, but only for, these spaces will be open if it's not, if somebody's not there charging.
And is this, is this metered to, like, like, where's the, where's the line coming from? The meter is, who pays the meter bill?
Well, the, the village does. And so we're, we'll, to, to the earlier question, this'll, this'll cover our, our, the current ComEd, uh, rate for our, it, it's tapped into the same circuit that our holiday light panelists, that's on the, on the west, west end of the Village Court lot.
I thought we had an, an agreement here on electricity with ComEd. How does that back into this?
Not, not in the, for, certainly for municipal buildings, but we do pay for, um, all of our streetlights, uh, those types of things.
I thought it was pulled off the village hall. I thought it was out here. I thought it was.
No, no, it's, it's at the other end of Village Court parking lot.
So what, what would it, if you know, what would it cost somebody to fill up with, you know, with, you know, suppose they were down to the bone? Um, how, how much would it cost at ten or fifteen cents to fill up?
Well, it's, it's.
They're not gonna fill up in two hours.
It's gonna be seven, it's gonna be seven to ten hours of charge, depending on the vehicle type.
So two, two hours worth, how much, uh, how much are they accomplishing?
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna, what, from what we understand from, from our vendor, they're gonna be, they're gonna be able to draw enough energy for, for fifty, you know, thirty-five to fifty miles of driving.
Okay, and how many kilowatts is two hours? Does it, do you dispense in two hours?
I think it's about fifteen, about fifteen.
So what if we charge fifteen cents, to Gail's point, that, that means we're.
Fifteen cents?
Fifteen cents. We're not as cheap as Winnetka, so maybe they would go there. But on the other hand, it's such a small difference, nobody would mind paying the fifteen cents.
I, I think honestly, staff is comfortable with whatever the board's comfortable with. This is, this really is a very minor cost overall. Um, we wanted to make sure that, there are some communities that want to waive costs and we wanted to make sure, first of all, that you didn't wanna do that. And secondarily, what the rate would be, which is why we proposed what we proposed. But as I mentioned, there's no magic to that number. Um, we're comfortable with whatever it is the board's direction is on this.
And similar to, I hate to bring up the chickens, but similar to the chickens, um, this fee and fine schedule is evaluated every year. So we are just about, just over six months, seven months, um, away from evaluating this again, so we can change it. Um, we can also use fee structures to modify behavior. So if we do find folks that are abusing the two-hour limit, you can als, the station has the capability to apply a surcharge. So that's something else that we could consider, um, depending on usage. So the, the station itself is very comprehensive. It comes with a backend portal, so we can monitor usage. We can find out how many vehicles are using it, how long they're using it, um, and then we can modify based off of that.
Parking ticket in there or you're over two, two hours?
You can, you can.
I, I, I do think, you know, this is, we're operating without a whole lot of information. We're gonna get a lot more information as we begin to use these. I do not anticipate this is the last electric car charging station that the village is gonna install. I think this is likely to be the first, um, that will take place over, over time. Um, but we will gather information on this, on the usage, that we can present back to the board and talk in more detail. But these are, we are talking about very small numbers, everyone.
And I'm assuming this is a non-Tesla charger, right? This will not charge Teslas, is that true?
It, it, it will. A Tesla vehicle owner has an adapter that, that, that this will accommodate. will accommodate.
Correct.
It, it pretty much, uh-
Up to the Tesla owner.
Correct.
Their adapter is used on our equipment.
Usually now Teslas are being sold with those adapters so that they can be more compatible with the entire charging network that's being built out in the country.
Unfortunately, you have to buy them from Apple.
All right, so fifteen cents? I mean, you know, let's, let's, let's just go with fifteen cents.
Whatever it takes, however it costs.
Sure. You don't wanna subsidize billionaires?
If, if we want, you know, especially responsive, especially about parking, I don't know if you do it in two hours and a minute, but in two hours and ten minutes or something-
We can set that, we can set that, and, and it'll send the, the user, uh, a text that they're fifteen minutes out. And that's just pretty common for these charge point sites, you know, get, get out to move your vehicle, you're, you're fifteen minutes away from-
It's part of a broad network, it's actually pretty cool technology.
There's, um, there are some minor advantages in, in an incentive, if you, if you believe it will draw more electric vehicles, and that would be the reason for an incentive is to, if we were wanting to promote the use of electric vehicles, which would then, of course, reduce the noise, which would accommodate for the forty chickens, uh, that reduce the noise in Glencoe, and reduce the local emissions in Glencoe, which have associated values and benefits that might be worth, I mean, I'm not advocating for this, I'm just trying to make a, make a point, um, the, the potential to subsidize. I'm not suggesting we do, but I'm just pointing out, that's why some would, uh, provide or, or promote a subsidization of, of, uh, electric chargers.
I think that's what the city of Highland Park does.
I'd rather see us have more chargers than less, I don't see, that's most of us, but you can see the reason we have the faster chargers, since you can only go thirty-five miles.
I, I would note, we, we did, we did, uh, install the infrastructure here, to retain the ability to add a second dual port without, uh, without a whole lot of additional effort.
Right. Fifteen cents? Do we need to do the, the hours too, or just the-
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
We can pick one or the other.
So I think, I think, I, I understand, all the points that we could debate about this more than we should, um, I think there's consensus at fifteen cents.
So we'd need a motion to amend the-
Well, no, to, to approve the, the resolution, um, with the amendment of the fifteen cents.
Is there such a motion?
Some of, with the amendment to fifteen cents.
If there's such, okay. Paul, let's have a roll call.
Oh boy, see what happens when I'm not paying attention? I need my chi chi. Trustee Hallwack?
Yes.
Trustee Listener?
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney?
Yes.
Trustee Underdog?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Vrie?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you for the excellent, clear presentation and the explanation about that green chicken. Okay, the next item is consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract for the purchase of a twenty twenty-two Ford Super Duty F six hundred, one and a half ton dump truck from Kunis Ford in Antioch, Illinois, for a total cost not to exceed a hundred and ten thousand, three hundred sixty-one dollars, which I understand is not a bargain basement price, but is what it is.
Yes, just very briefly, uh, this is on the agenda, on the regular agenda, just, just to raise, raise the, uh, the point with the board that as we've, as we've talked, uh, consistently over the last three months through the budget process, uh, equipment procurement, like, like many other, uh, uh, supply side, uh, commodities and equipment has, has been an issue, particularly with these trucks. Uh, we, we, uh, no longer have the ability presently to secure pricing through some of our normal outlets, competitive pricing. So we went out on the, we went out on the street, found this vehicle at a, at a, at a lot up in, uh, up in the northern county, and, and are able to purchase this and have it, you know, within two weeks of, of, of the sale. Where, right now, we're not even, on our larger trucks, we're not even getting companies that'll, uh, uh, take an order right now. So we're, we're eight, we're estimating we're probably eighteen to thirty-six months out on some of our big trucks. So that being said, we had three, we had three large pieces of equipment in this year's budget, we're deferring two of those. This is the highest priority, the highest need based on its condition, and so that's, that's why we're recommending this tonight. We're paying, you know, a hundred and fifty percent of the normal price of the vehicle, but we'll have a vehicle, uh, to use within, within weeks, where, instead of years at this point.
You're paying a hundred and fifty percent of the old price of the vehicle? We don't know what the new price of the vehicle's gonna be in six months, I mean-
Correct. Well, with our, with our budget number, I guess, just to note that, yeah. And I'm happy to answer, answer questions. This is a, the question came up, this is a new vehicle, it's just, it's just one that we're, we're picking up off a lot that, uh, uh, through the good work of our, of our fleet supervisor, we were able to locate this. And, and as part, as part of that, uh, it requires you to waive the public bidding process, which is-
So it'll be a super majority vote.
And are you retiring a truck?
Yes, this vehicle that it's replacing, uh, will, will be sold for salvage, uh, at an upcoming auction.
And, and the putting off of the two other vehicles, are we doing that because they're just not available, or are we now starting to think about paying a hundred and fifty percent of what we expected? You know, is this-
Those are good questions. Those are good questions. We don't know that, but, but it's clearly not gonna happen, so we're not, I mean, they're not even taking an order for them, so we're, that will not happen this, at, at, at least it, as we're seeing that, that the tea leaves right now, that's not gonna happen this, this calendar year.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks for a clear presentation. Obviously, we're sorry about this, but there doesn't appear to be any choice if we want a dump truck. Is there a motion to approve?
There's a resolution.
So move.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, let's have a roll call.
Trustee Hallwack?
Yes.
Trustee Listener?
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney?
Yes.
Trustee Underdog?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Vrie?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mao, for an excellent presentation. Uh, that's the last item on the agenda. Is there anything before we close that anybody wants to raise? If not, first time since we've been together in person since July, I hope if we're gonna start doing this again. Thanks for everybody's hard work. Thanks to members of the audience who came. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some of-
There? Do we need a-
It could be a voice vote.
All in favor?
Hi.
Anybody wanna say no? The motion carries.
Can I have those? You're gonna update the chicken ordinance? Just send it to us, or do, send me Lang, we'll dump it in, whatever.
Yeah, you'll put in the vote.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta put the vote in.
Okay.